...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Donna is just showing up.
And I didn't read your email completely, but we're good.
Yeah.
I don't, we're on my way to it.
Okay. Yeah, we'll talk about it when you say something.
She wanted me to be in the dining room.
No, you said to her.
Do you have another reason?
Hey Donna, you could just keep running, walking up to the podium if you're first on. This is Donna Kane, she is the commander as the American Legion. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having me. The Legion has requested me to come and ask permission to hang our hometown hero flags in the village. We have so far twenty-two reservations for flags. We've talked with the previous mayor and she thought it was okay, wanted to bring it to the new mayor and request permission.
Now where do you want to hang these? On telephone and electric poles, wherever that's part of why we're here to discuss. What thoughts are?
I believe, but I may be incorrect, that we would need, if they're going to be on electric poles, we need to get an okay from National Grid.
National Grid.
Yes. So that would, you need to do a little bit of groundwork and find out about that. And then once, if, which they'll give their approval, I'm assuming, and then it would come back to the board if the board agrees to it, and then we would do a resolution, etc.
Okay.
That's the process.
Okay. We've spoken to them informally, but this is the first step, so this is where I start.
Now could we just make a motion contingent upon National Grid?
I wouldn't yet, because it would have to be a resolution. So I would just wait and make sure that.
I like the idea. Yeah, sounds good.
So as you and I discussed briefly, the outer part of Webb Street and the outer part of James Street, what, I think St. Louis and Mary? Yeah, I would say St. Louis and Mary.
So you're going to include the brackets and the flag and everything?
Yes.
And then is Terry?
It was going to.
Probably our crew will probably have to install when I was sweeping that.
I believe so, unless you want us to do it.
No, we have a lift.
Right.
We put flags up anyway, so.
And that's a good comment, that yes, they would do it, but it may not be on your time. With all, only, that's fine, you know, there's a variety of situations come through. That would be a coordination between Terry and the Legion.
Do they stay up year-round?
Um, we take our flags down, so I would say to take them down in the winter, just to protect them.
Right.
They're going to get enough sun fading and rain fade anyway. I'm really not sure how, you know, what materials they're made out of or how long they're.
Because other communities, I think, leave them up.
They might, they might hold them a little better.
So.
They have a three-year warranty.
Okay. Do they recommend it winter, or?
He said they'll last longer if they're taken down, but they will.
Correct.
You know. It's all variable.
How large are they?
I have one in my car, do you want me to go get it? I have one in my car.
Oh, sure.
It'd seem like after Veterans Day or something like that.
Yeah, leave it up. Yeah.
To cover Veterans Day and then.
It's basically. Right, that's what we do with the flags.
I think we just have to get a letter of approval from National Grid.
Yeah.
For that to be, and then.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you going to get a hold of them or? Do they get a hold of them or?
Yeah, she can, yeah, she would do that, and they can send us the information and we can make a resolution for that. They might.
Yeah, that's usually how they do it.
So they're going to have to walk up and down James, so we can figure that out.
Right.
Yes.
Wherever they see that.
Yeah. Footwork up to the Legion.
This is the smallest size that we chose.
Okay.
The pixels work the best on the smaller ones.
No.
And the bigger ones.
Well, those, yeah, new, they're much better than some of the other.
Yes, the technology has come along a lot. As well as the fabrics.
So what's the criteria to get one?
You have to be a veteran.
But is it just?
From Clayton.
From Clayton, yeah.
Living here or came from here.
Yeah.
We don't, it's pretty.
Doesn't matter, just from Clayton.
Right. Resident or guest.
This might be insensitive, but is it someone that died, or is it just anyone that?
Anybody, alive or dead, I take a ball. You served, you served, whether you lived to tell about it or not.
But also family members can.
Yes, yes, and once we get all the approvals we need, then, I haven't been advertising, the ones that we have reserved right now are just people that word of mouth through the Legion so far.
So while you were running out to your car, you mentioned that the mayor said from James down to Mary and Webb down to Mary, and what Central Hudson, I mean, National Grid is going to want to know is the pole numbers.
Okay.
So if you guys could take some time to collect, there's a number on the pole.
Okay.
In the mail-in, I guess.
You're probably going to want the ones that are lit too, right? Where there's an actual light to shine on them at night?
That would be great.
That's what we do with the flags.
But, you know, I have.
Depends on how many you get.
Right, I have twenty-five, so that gets me from the cemetery to Mary already.
Right.
I've already got one street full.
So, yeah.
Yeah, huge interest.
Are we going to go from the cemetery that?
We would like to, because that's where Joseph Longtway is buried, and we have a state plaque.
Oh, yeah. It's a good connection.
Makes sense.
A very good connection, and then calling couch or in the cemetery right there.
Yeah. And then how much is it to get one for?
One fifty-four with the bracket. Yeah, very reasonable.
Two hundred for installation, three fifty.
I got lots of volunteers. If you need extra hands.
I'll get a plug for my wife and not tell her.
Yeah, we have a couple of surprise ones so far.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not even hard to that.
Okay, I will talk to National Grid, hopefully tomorrow.
And then when just, then, then the two of you have a formal letter that would be passed on.
Okay.
Now, I, what I don't want, and it's nothing to do with you, oh, they said it's okay.
Right, 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 sure. Yeah, it's better if everything's in writing.
Absolutely.
No one can say he said, she said. Okay, great, thank you so much for your time.
You wanted to talk about the memorial.
Oh, yes, I, just a question, I was wondering if there was going to be any spring cleanup, power washing, such, around the monument before Memorial Day? Looking pretty sad.
We're going to try.
Because I have people that will do it.
Yep, okay.
If, that's okay.
Okay. I'll touch base with you.
Okay, perfect. Perfect, okay, that's all. Owen, when are new bricks? Do we have a list of bricks?
That I have, no, I don't, I don't know.
Do you know what I think you're doing?
Comes from, or who does it? Kazee, does Kazee usually put those in?
Uh, I don't know who the town, the village contracts.
Isn't it Wright, isn't it?
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, Wright?
Yeah, we send them an email of who's, who's paid for them and who wants them, and then.
Do we have anybody in the wings?
I, I'm not sure, I'd have to ask Amanda.
We'll check into that.
But, yeah.
Yeah, because there's a couple that are not where they should be.
Oh, I don't know about that.
Joanne Whitton is one. She's a past commander and she's.
She's over.
In the back.
All right.
But we don't install them, do we?
No.
Somebody else installs them.
We don't install them.
So they're talking, so what, how does, what are the bricks, like, how does it work or whatever? I mean, I know they're memorial bricks, but like, how do people, just, like, how does someone get a brick?
You. I know this is always going to get confusing to be quite. Donna, just a moment, please, and Terry can jump in. How do you get a brick? Because I know it's always been confusing.
So there, on your website, there's a place to request one.
Oh, okay.
And then it gets paid for through the village, I'm assuming, and.
Well, the person, then the person would reimburse us. We don't pay for them.
What, the installation is what?
They pay for it.
They pay for it. My kids did mine, I don't know. But, yeah, it's, it's on your website, and from there, I've never clicked on it, I guess I should have before I came.
It's okay, I've never clicked either, so.
I'll have to click on it.
Somebody needs to click on it.
It's exciting, I have something to do tonight.
Okay, we'll get more information on that and see where any of them are, if there are any outstanding ones.
Okay. It would be good if it could be done before Memorial Day, no, everything needs to be done before Memorial Day, but.
That might be.
It never happens.
It's only, you know, two weeks away, that's, cleaning, that's a whole different.
Right, we might be able to do that.
Okay, that would be the most important.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we could.
For sure.
We will.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
Super, thank you for coming, thank you. Terry Jones.
You all, good evening, everybody, you all should have a copy of the DPW Activity Report. As you can see today, we were installing a new water service at five thirty-two James Street, inch and a half service. That went well, road streets back open, everybody's very cooperative, and tomorrow we will be there tapping the sewer, however, the traffic will be able to, at worst case, an area one lane, so we won't have the street entirely blocked off, because we'll be on the same side as the house. The guys did a fantastic job. I did want to, I did put it in my report, but I just wanted to let everyone know that the tree that was planted in the park.
That was nice, I didn't know that.
Was donated by Agro Care, Herb Frost.
That was nice.
Yeah.
He really likes the community and.
Thank you, no.
And I did thank him on behalf of the board and, and your committee.
Thank you.
That's all that I have on the report, is there any questions on my report?
Are the gangways in, Terry? Are the gangways in?
The, uh, the gangways are not in yet, and he hasn't confirmed with me, but I believe Thursday, this Thursday and Friday, they are supposed to be installed and also the diver inspection, so that's supposed to happen this week, and I can update you all when I get a confirmation.
Oh, so what is a curb box rod?
A little tiny round thing in front of your house, a little black, that's where we can stick our wrench down in and turn the water on and off.
Oh, so I can now, then you have to replace it.
So the rod is actually the working part that turns the valve itself. The curb box is the access hole.
Thank you.
Terry, while you're here, I spoke with Deb Hunter from the library as well, and she's fine with moving on to, you know, standard baluster.
Whatever we can make work.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not having the stainless steel cables.
Okay.
In place, just as a way to save money.
Yeah.
She thought the look of white balusters was appropriate.
Okay. All right, that'll, that'll be good. Yeah, I never would have dropped that cable, it was that expensive, but it is, it's crazy.
And there's also a white, you may, maybe already know all of this, but there's a white vinyl that is, oh, I think it's almost twelve, it's called half inch, one by twelve, but it's really kind of half inch by eleven, something, but that could cover the outside of the ramp that you see, as far as the wood goes.
Okay.
It's sold at home people, they come in like eight-foot lengths, but it's a way of making it maintenance-free again, it's not a spot that needs paint, and it's not a spot that needs, you know, if you don't paint it, it gets all weathered looking.
Right, so it does, well, it helps stay on the maintenance, basically.
Exactly, but then I also run it up the side of stringers on the stairs as well.
Okay.
But then you need to allow that for the overhang, so that the overhang of the treads cover it, but I thought that might look nice on the front as well, because when you look at the ramp head-on, you do see that slope right there, and that could cover it.
Right.
Perhaps you already have an, one, all that or another idea.
Okay. Jake, Jake Angus will probably be the one doing it, one of our guys, he's pretty experienced in all that kind of stuff, so I'll run that by him, and if I got any questions, I'll give you a call. Any other questions? So it's that time of year again for the seasonal labors, the dock attendants, as you can see, the list of dock attendants, everybody is returning, except for Craig Loras, will be new at Mary Street with all your approval, and everybody, actually, they'll start this week at Rotary and then next week at Mary.
So we could do the motion for the attachment that you received in your packet? We'll do the Rotary Park, Mary Street, and then the beautification, how does that sound?
Yeah, yes. I have a motion for that.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
In a second.
I'll second.
Any, a poll, all in favor?
Aye.
Then Mary Street down?
You want to do a separate, I'll make, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Oh, I thought you said we're doing them all together. I'll second.
And then the last one?
Beautification.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any comments? Great, thank you.
And then one last thing on the agenda. We hired Jacob Angus, well, four or five months ago now, he's doing a fantastic job, the guy is quite knowledgeable and experienced in a lot of different things, he went out and got his CDL permit before he even started with us, and went through the trade, trade, and he's got his CDL. He plowed this winter, he's learning in the loader, he's running the street sweeper, so, and I know we had spoken about it during budget time, to move Jacob up to Emilio beginning June first, just need.
Just need a motion.
Yeah, I'll make it.
In a second? All in favor?
Aye. He'll be very, very happy. We have a good crew, we have a good crew right now. Everybody's working really well together. I really like my crew.
I have a question or comment, the stop sign at Union and Paris Street.
Yep.
Needs to be repaired, somebody looked like they were trying to take it out, but they couldn't.
They were trying to take it out?
It's what it looked like.
Like pull it out?
Yeah, because there's a good-sized hole around it that's the ruin of it.
Yeah, wow. That'll get bored when you're getting home from the bars.
And then I'd like this written in the paper pamphlet, please, under, under this, it's now grass cutting season.
What is it?
It's grass cutting season, please do not blow your grass into the side, into.
Please, don't.
The, this road, and please blow and clean off your sidewalks with the grass, because I've noticed the last week, more people have blown their grass into the road and have not cleaned it up than I've seen in a long time. So I'm going to say this every meeting.
And homeowners are responsible for their landscaper's actions, too.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Because I watched the landscaper do it over here on Webb, blow it out into the street.
And I watched my neighbor's grass cutter do it, and I watched it at a large facility at the end of Union or Alexandria and Mary Street, and they blew it all into the road.
Yeah, then they get stuck in the storm drains and stuff.
Well, yeah, it's not good for it, it's not just because of motorcycles, it's not good for you.
Apparently they don't own motorcycles.
Well, nobody's told them, but I'd like that in the paper, I'll say it every week. Okay.
And Terry, thank you for all your help with the climate smart, but, Spring Pass, that was the name of it.
Yeah, absolutely. That's great, it's going to be a nice tree.
They dug the hole, they brought the tree there, and we put it in, and they made it look nice, and, yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll doctor it up a little bit more, make the, you know, for now, it's a new, young tree, we don't really want to mess around the root ball too much, so we just put a little mulch around it for now, so.
I said we'll look to it today.
They're good, they like to get.
They do, they just flourish.
My little desk question, I'm sorry, about mowing?
Sure.
Is there a code above?
Yes.
There is, there is a code, yes.
There's a code that says how high the grass should be, and there is, I believe it's even a state law, as far as the shooting into the driveway. Will we this year be contacting people to tell them to cut the grass? Possibly not, we've done that in the past, but it's kind of a time issue on our part, it's on their part, yes, but we're not going to go and cut their grass and charge them as we did for snow and flower.
It's also no mow May, so there is that. But up here, you can't wait.
No mow May?
Yeah, you can't wait till the end of May, it's too much, it's like, no mow until Mother's Day, and then that's.
Any other questions for Terry?
Thanks, Terry.
Thanks, I should be up this week, hopefully.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
We have good weather this week.
I believe we have.
Well, thank you. Any questions on the police report?
What do I see in the entire police report? Is it through the police or through the office?
The entire? This is a.
No, I mean the detail of this police report.
This is that you don't get it, well, you'd have to go to Kevin's office and ask him. We don't get it.
These parts we did water with it.
Yeah, we don't get it, you would have to get that from him. Any comments on the consent agenda, numbers one through four? Could I have a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
In a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jeez, and Capitol Projects get smaller and smaller.
I'll make the motion.
All right.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Joanna?
Okay. Okay, so we're rescinding the joint town-village of Clayton Code Enforcement Officer/CEO intermunicipal agreement. We've talked about this one. I need a, someone to.
Make a motion for that?
Make a motion, and then we'll do a roll call vote, if you're all okay with it.
Dave's all okay with it, right?
Yes. Someone make a motion? I'll make a motion. Someone second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? You want a roll call vote?
Yeah. Mayor Hyde?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Trustee Duford?
Yes.
Trustee Reddick?
Yes.
And Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Okay, we have the tax warrant, taxes are coming, and then the notice that we place in the paper two times. And does anybody have any questions on that?
So we need a motion to accept.
Yeah.
So I'll make that.
In a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the notice of taxes for 2025.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
In a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Taxes went up a dime.
And then the next one is the Kinsley, to renew the annual contract, and this was talked about at the last meeting.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
And the next one is the LGSS new contract.
Yes, this is.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We will be saving at least ten thousand this year for the new budget. So thank you.
And then Kevin wants to hire Patrick Young, starting May twelfth, at sixteen dollars an hour for a parking.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I don't have a lot to say, I did think, though, that last year we had okayed that residents could get a free boat, I call it a boat take, for putting a boat in and out of the water, are you all receptive to that again this year?
Yes.
So would someone make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
In a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Reddick and Kenny. Great, thank you. Talked about the grass, am I going to steal your thunder, Ron? We were, as you, awarded Pro Housing Certificate, and we received that last week, which is great, and then it real, we will be getting climate smart, it's just a matter of time.
Yeah, they, they sent that email about, they wanted our.
Yeah, our seal or this or that.
So that's a good sign to put on their website.
We will hear that in.
But it's not official.
Yeah, in June, so, so that's fabulous. And I, I noticed the other day, when I was reading our magazine from the Nikon, Rock Island Light Houses on it, so I thought that was fabulous. Next Tuesday, we'll be having another workshop as we did today, and then after that, we will have more discussion as to which one to choose. We are doing LWRP, we are interviewing our consultants this week, so we're moving forward on that, so. That's all I have, do you have anything?
I do, so we had the last chamber meeting until September, there really wasn't much to report from it, other than what I'm about to tell you, and that is, because they were talking about their bylaws and that sort of thing, and they were trying to update that before the summer got rolling, and pretty much everything you've already heard about as far as scheduling and stuff, and you've gotten a schedule of events, I'm sure by now, it's all intact and ready to go for the, ready to go for the summer, so we'll meet again in September. In the course of the meeting, what I talked to him about was the pro housing community with the village business, and I talked to him about the divers going in, so they'd understand that the divers are going in, in next weekend, and, and then they've got the town report, and the town report was the town got a million and a half dollar grant to put in the docks. Yeah, and they're going to extend them down this way from the town docks towards the boat place that we bought.
That wasn't a grant, that was, wasn't that the additional ready money they didn't spend?
He said grant, I'm just going to tell you what he said, he said, we got a grant. And he said, so anyway, so, one of the board members brought up the issue of, you know, you're, you're going to be registering the Airbnbs, and there's going to be way more, you know, money coming in for the occupancy, occupancy tax, are you going to share that
and there's gonna be way more, you know, money coming in for the occupancy tax. Are you gonna share that with the board? And the answer was kind of anonymous. So, it caused me to write this letter to each of our fifteen legislators in Jefferson County, and they've already gotten it. Uh, and I, I would encourage you, because I, you know, in my opinion, we're going to, we're not gonna get anywhere unless we go to the source, and the source, to me, is the legislature. My understanding is that the initial legislature of Jefferson County, it was made up of town supervisors. And over years, they became independent from those people and were elected as legislators. I, I did talk to Bob Cantwell like three weeks ago and express my concern about this, that it's not being shared. But I also learned in the course of that conversation, we're not the only village who goes, is going through this right now. I will tell you that, uh, I gave you the list of the, and their emails on the next page of that. One letter is not gonna do much. Many letters may get their attention. I would suggest that you can pick and choose from that letter whatever you want. I wouldn't copy it exactly, though, because I don't want to, it should look like a form letter, cause they'll ignore it. Um, I would. And I, I think that's the way to, uh, to, uh, go after this and, you know, do what you wish with it. But I tend to get my family and friends to, to write to these guys and say, "It's time to change." It is only a policy decision. It is not an administrative decision. They could, they do the same thing with sales tax. They know where it comes from. They know when it gets distributed out and where it's going. If it comes from the village, we get our piece back. The town gets their piece back, so they can do the same thing with this. It's not, it's, it's just a keystroke difference. It's only a policy decision.
It's a, um, local law that they have to change. I've seen the law, and it does say in there about town supervisors. I too have had, um, I just talked to Bob on, uh, on Friday about Cantwell. I've spoken to, um, the county, the chairman of the county legislature. It's just a few little words that have to be changed. That's all that has to be done. They give me the impression, yes, and also the perfect timing to do it is now with the bed tax. They agree with, they, they, they agree. Again, you've got the whole group. There's gonna be some that will not agree, because they don't have say at the village, but, um, it's, it's looking very positive, and that's the way we will circumvent it with the town. But we do have a town joint meeting sometime in June, and, um, the individual to my right had told us numerous times, "Well, if you can see where it needs to come out of our budget, let me know. I think it would be good that we come in with a, four or five things that could be taken out of their budget, so that we could at least get the money for the chamber." But there'd be a lot more money coming in if we can, with the county legislators changing this.
My second topic is, since this topic was referred to in our last meeting, I was contacted by constituents who questioned me why the village would consider renting the living space above our water intake facility at the end of Park Point. I want to be clear that I am not in favor of anyone, uh, living above our, uh, above our most valuable asset and our greatest liability. No amount of rental income is worth jeopardizing this village's only source of water. A fire or water leak will disable our intake system. A catastrophic failure of the high voltage equipment in the building will endanger the lives of any proposed tenant. A slip and fall by anyone on the village-owned property will land us in court, no matter what agreements they sign. The village and our residents have spent millions on this water system and will be spending more for upgrades in the near future and the ability, to have the ability of clean and fresh water at their faucets, and I will not agree to jeopardize that for the sake of a few dollars.
Who was that from?
Yeah.
For me.
Oh, from you. From you. I thought you said you got numerous people.
I said I was contacted by constituents who actually watch our videos and asked me what I thought about it. So, I said I would respond publicly, and I just did.
Well, it's, it's, it's not a deal on either direction yet, and there is more conversation to have. I've been working both with a potential individual and also with the water department, and it's just something I want to look at. It, it's a good fifteen to twenty thousand dollars more, uh, no matter how a trustee feels. It is also that there is somebody living over top of that, and it makes some people feel as though the facility is actually safer if there is a problem. I know trustee McDowell is not in favor of, favor of it, but the entire issue needs to be explored and made a decision with proper explanation, exploration, as opposed to, you weren't, you was not, you were not in favor of it a year ago. Uh, after looking at the particular building, I've been in the apartment numerous times. Needs a lot of work. Needs a lot of offerings to it. And, um, so, but we will have further conversation about it and, and make a decision as to which way to go.
Yeah, I just wanna say that I agree one hundred percent with, uh, Deputy Mayor McDowell on this and every, every point, including, um, the liability issues, the danger issues, and the, the idea that, yes, maybe there could be a rental income, but that the potential expenses, liabilities and stuff outweighs that, so I'm in agreement with Deputy.
Well, I, you can be in agreement.
Oh, no, I'm just saying. I mean, I'm allowed to talk and I was just talking.
I understand. You're allowed to talk.
Yeah, I'm done. Thank you.
And it's just something that needs to be explored and make a reasonable decision from that exploration of it, but that's fine.
I definitely think that insurance would be a big issue.
Well, we've been doing, I'm not suggesting that it's the right or wrong. It's only we've been doing this for twenty, twenty, thirty years. So, as far as insurance, that's all covered.
Right, but it didn't seem to work out too well.
Well, that's because they didn't, they didn't pay. But if I have somebody that's willing to pay upfront.
But they paid initially, and then they didn't, and then we had to pay all these, this money in lawyer fees, as well as the dangers and liability and everything else.
That was, that was poor management on the, um, on the village board. Now, I'm not suggesting it was due off. There was also previous boards that did not do good housekeeping, is a better way to put it.
And with the additional expenses that needs to be brought up, that also makes it much less attractive. So, sounds like we'll talk about it.
Well, I mean, if you, well, yeah, we're gonna talk about it, because as you can tell, I'm in favor of it. And we put together a plan and we look at the plan. If everybody says throw the plan out the window, then you're welcome out the window. But I don't think that the plan has been close enough. You know, I know trustee McDowell's a conservative. Do I get a copy of it?
I just went down and actually looked at it the first time, uh, today. I went and did a tour of the facilities. I can see why somebody would like to live there. It's gotta be a gorgeous view there, right?
Million dollar.
Oh, my gosh. Absolutely gorgeous view.
And as the water department says, it would be nice to have someone be there, because if there is a problem, then they would know right of you. Any other comments or questions?
Oh, you mean?
No, not about this.
Not, about anything, yeah.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, obviously, the, the Spring Fest went really well. We already talked about it a little bit, but I, you know, extra special thanks to Joanne and Amanda and the DPW and Nancy and, and the task force, and, and they did a great job. We had, we had over a hundred, I think it was a hundred and four people attend, and it was nice to have all the different nonprofits here from the village. There was Save the River, there was Tilt, there was the Art Center, there was Antique Boat Museum, as well as, you know, more regional entities like Cornell Plopper Extension and, and Cornell Waste Management, doing composting. There's, they left a poster. I don't know where it is, but it's really interesting. Yeah. It'd be nice to figure out a place to put it, because it's just, yeah, it's exciting. So, yeah, kudos to everybody. And we're having our debrief meeting on Wednesday of this week, just to kind of, hey, what can we do better? What can we do different? So, if anyone here had heard anything, you know, just letting me know.
Or to better weather.
Yeah, like, weather wasn't great, but we did, yeah, we ended up doing it inside, except for the actual tree plant. You can't do it inside. Thank you.
You made the best of it.
Ron, do you have any comments?
No, I don't.
So, like I said, we'll have our next, next workshop next Wednesday at three thirty, and we'll go from there. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.